Good evening. At this time, I will call our council work session to order. Just as you may have noticed, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will be filling in for Manager Moore this evening, who has been excused. And our first item for discussion is the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts Update. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Vice Members of Council, joining us today is Lorelei Costas-Morrow, the Executive Director and CEO of the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. She's going to share some recent events, some future events, and some updates regarding the building renovations. Lorelei?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Hughes, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lorelei Costa-Morrow, the Director of the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. Thank you for having me at your work session this afternoon. I know, can you all hear me okay? I know you all have a really big agenda tonight, but hopefully I can start things off on a really light note because we have some great things going on at the Suffolk Center, and I just wanted to take a few minutes to share that with you. I think you all know the Suffolk Center pretty well. Our mission, of course, is to bring performing arts and visual arts to our community, and we're committed to supporting the economic vitality of Suffolk. We're committed to welcoming and including diverse audiences in Suffolk and beyond. Everyone is welcome at the Suffolk Center. We're a comprehensive art center, and I know you all know a lot about the art center, but I'm adding this for the benefit of folks in the audience and anybody who might be watching online. We're a comprehensive art center, so we're not just performing arts. We also have galleries for visual arts. We have lots of classes and studios for everything from dance, painting, sewing, pottery. We have writing classes, poetry classes, all kinds of neat things. We have summer camps for kids. We have all sorts of events inside the center, whether it's meetings or conferences, weddings, all sorts of things. So we're really here for the community. We just finished our summer camps at the Suffolk Center, and we had three camps this year. We had Art Camp, we had Steam Camp, Steam Standing, you've heard of STEM, I'm sure. We put the "A" in it. So it's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. And then we had a two-week Musical Theater Camp. I actually brought a short video for you from our Musical Theater Camp because nothing is more adorable than young kids singing and dancing. And these kids did every aspect of this musical production at the end of their camp. They developed their characters, they came up with the plot, they came up with the lyrics for their song. It's truly spectacular. So just enjoy this. This is less than a minute.
(audience cheering) And there was a dance party, and all of the girls returned to the world. (music playing) (singing) In the world, there's no more parking. Only people, only people, our business, our business. In the world, there's no more parking. Only people, only people, our business, our business. (audience cheering)
I think the only thing that would have made that more adorable is if we put puppies on the stage, but our custodial staff didn't want that. Anyway, 17 of those students across the three camps were on full scholarship. We're absolutely committed to making the arts accessible for people in our community. That's so important to us. So, summer is an exciting time for us because we have kids in the building. We're doing summer camps, but we're really getting ready for the fall. And we have two super exciting things coming up this September. One is the Suffolk Plenair Festival, so you've probably seen the signs popping up around town. This is our second year doing it. Plenair is creating visual art outside, usually painting, and it's really difficult to do because you're trying to paint the scene in front of you really quickly, and the light is changing, and the clouds are moving, and the people are moving, and all sorts of things are changing. So you're under the gun, and you're braving the weather and trying to paint this. We are bringing 45 artists from across the country to Suffolk to paint. They had to apply to get in. It was a blind, juried process. They submitted their artwork. They were selected from the best of the best. Last year was our first year doing it. It was, you know, lots of kind of local folks and regional folks. This year, we got on the circuit, and people heard about the festival and knew it was a great experience. So we got, we even have somebody coming from the Netherlands. So we're super excited about Plenair. So 45 artists are coming, and what I love about the Plenair Festival, they're going out across the city and painting what's in front of them for a few days. Then they bring their paintings back. We have an exhibit. We have a wet paint sale, a reception. It's judged. Last year, the winning piece was a painting of chickens, of all things. But what I love about it is that it's a celebration of Suffolk because they're going to all different landscapes. And of course, Suffolk being so large and diverse, we have it all. We have downtown, we have historic neighborhoods, we have farmland, we have waterways, we have the Great Dismal Swamp, all sorts of different things that they can capture. So we're becoming known for that here in Suffolk in our Plenair Festival. So the Wet Paint Sale is on Friday, September 9th, at 6:00 PM. Tickets are on sale on our website. The next day, during Taste of Suffolk Downtown, we have what's called the Quick Draw Competition, and artists have two hours to paint some scene in the downtown area, just two hours, and then it's judged. It's open to anyone. It's not just the artists in the competition. So last year, we had several kids participating. By the way, their paintings all sold. It was really adorable. And so anybody from the community can participate in the Quick Draw Competition. So just once again, the painters are arriving September 6th. They're painting for a few days all around Suffolk. We've got our Wet Paint Sale. We've got an exhibit of all of their pieces on Saturday, the 10th, and also on Saturday and 10th, in conjunction with Taste of Suffolk. We've got that Quick Draw Competition. So I hope you all will come out. It's a really exciting event. The next event I'm just as excited for, and this is a huge honor for the city to be hosting, the Kyiv City Ballet. They are coming to Suffolk. They're, we are their only stop in Virginia. They are coming September 19th through the 22nd. And this is an internationally known ballet company. If you can see on that picture, those are the kinds of venues that normally host this ballet company. They are one of the world's greats, but they're coming to Suffolk. It's actually under very tragic circumstances that they're coming. They were on tour in Paris when the invasion began in February, and they have not been able to go home. And they've lost their homes. They've lost family members. Several of the dancers left the country to join them on tour. They had to keep extending their tour and extending their tour, and then they added the United States to this tour. And when we kind of got word that they were doing that and that they were coming to North Carolina, we jumped on it. We called their agent, and we got on their circuit, and they're coming here for four days, for a four-day residency. I want to tell you who those people are in the photos. That top left, that is their artistic director. That is Ivan Kozlov. He's the former premier of the Marinsky Ballet, the International Ballet. He's a big deal. His wife, Ekaterina, is their deputy director. She also helps choreograph. The gentleman on their lower left is one of their choreographers. He's only 23. And then the two ladies on his right are two of their prima ballerinas, and they're all coming to Suffolk. So, some of the things that they're doing while they're here. On Monday, we will have a Welcome to Suffolk reception for them. You'll all be getting invitations in the mail, and I hope you'll come and show them some hospitality and make them feel really welcome to our beautiful city. The next day, they are doing educational programs. They are doing, in conjunction with Suffolk Public Schools, we're putting together a program called Backstage Pass. I actually had a mistake later in the presentation because this is for 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. We're doing this with Dr. Jolene Neighbors. They're getting some curriculum, the students. They're coming to the center. They're watching rehearsal. They've got Q&amp;A with the dancers. They're learning all about the ballet and what it takes, and they have an opportunity to interact with these dancers and learn something from them. And I think this is incredible because we've all been reading, I think with horror, everything that's going on in their country, and the dancers are talking about this with these audiences that they're visiting. We're doing master classes that evening. Local dance studios, not just children, but also their instructors and adults, we've got one for adults, are coming to learn from these world-class ballet dancers. On Wednesday night, they are doing a performance called Tribute to Peace. It's actually three different works. It's more contemporary. They're all super relevant. One of them is called Men of Kyiv, and another is called Thoughts, and another is called Tribute to Peace. And Tribute to Peace was choreographed by Ivan. These are all about the experiences of these dancers right now and what's going on in their country. So I think it'll be very poignant, and I hope you can come. Thursday night, they are performing Swan Lake, the full-length Swan Lake. We're not able to accommodate a full orchestra. They will be dancing to recorded music, but I can't believe that we've got Swan Lake at the Suffolk Center. We're incredibly honored to have them. They are stretching our facility. They need more dressing rooms, more washers and dryers for all their towels, more booms than we have. We're borrowing from other venues. But it is, I think, a big deal that Suffolk is getting, I mean, they're not going to Virginia Beach. No offense to Virginia Beach. They're not going to Norfolk. They're coming to Suffolk, and I'm really honored that they're coming. We've got lots of sponsors in the community who are making this possible, including All First, Birdsong Peanuts, Mike Dooman, Otto Superstore, Hilton Garden Inn. Of course, the city is helping with all sorts of things. Baldwin Advisory, some individuals, the Blocker Foundation, the Camp Foundation. One sponsor that just came through on Monday that you don't see on your list is Dominion Energy. They're helping to bring this group. So normally, bringing an international ballet company is way outside of our scope and our budget. They normally wouldn't consider a venue like ours because we just don't have that many seats. We have 500 seats, which means every seat is a great seat. You get to see these dancers so well. But again, because of some terrible circumstances, we have an opportunity to welcome these folks to Suffolk, so I'm excited for that. And I hope you can join us. We'll also have a reception on Thursday evening, sort of the finale to their residency, another opportunity for the community to meet the dancers. And tickets are on sale on our website. I think Swan Lake tickets are going very fast. There still are some great seats for Wednesday night's performances. I think they'll probably both sell out, but Swan Lake is about this close, so make sure to get your tickets. All of this is going on while we've started renovations at the center. And it's been an interesting time to keep open and keep doing all of our business while we've got some renovations going on. And those started in the beginning of July. You know all about this project. Of course, the building has some substantial leaks. We're taking the opportunity to do some upgrades in our theater, in our ballroom. We've started work on the northeast side. This is the side with the most damage. I think I've walked just about every one of you to some of the areas where, you know, the plaster is crumbling and the windows are in bad shape. We've removed the windows on the northeast side. We're in the process of removing plaster. We've removed the cornices. We've installed new flashings, lintels, sill pans, wheat holes, masonry cornices, all that on that northeast side. The northeast side is the one that's facing the Obese Foundation. So we're in the middle of that. Each side of the, we're going one side of the building at a time, so we're starting on that northeast side. Next, we are going to, oh, well, here's some photos. This is the 1960s section of the building. You can see the windows have been removed. This is some of the new flashing that's in place, the lintels, the steel lintels. You can see above these doors and above these windows where we had to take out about 16 inches of brick, put in new flashing, put in new lintels, put brick back in. So all of that work is in progress. Windows are arriving Friday. I'm excited about that. We're actually getting them in four batches, and the first batch is coming Friday. We are replacing one of the sections of seating in the theater, and that is, it was supposed to be earlier this month, I'll be honest with you, but they delayed the shipment for a month. So I'm a little bit nervous about this with the Kyiv Ballet coming just a few days after, but it will, it will happen. We haven't removed the old seats. We're replacing the seats because the older seats are quite narrow, and there's very little leg space. They were designed for teenagers 100 years ago, and so our taller, wider guests are a little bit uncomfortable, and we wanted to make sure we had spacious seating so people could be comfortable watching a Swan Lake performance. So that will happen in the middle of September. We're doing wall sealing and flooring repairs. We'll be installing insulation, trim, cap, flashing. That's, that flashing around the perimeter of the roof, the tannemic sealant that's going to be sealing the brick and the concrete on the exterior walls. We will be working on the front wall, January through June. The southwest and rear wall, that's the wall that's facing, the southwest wall is with the restaurant facing the parking lot. That will be July through December. And we'll be working on the pergola walkway, regrading that because it floods, and putting a roof over that, hopefully in July and August of 2023. And in terms of fundraising, and this is in large parts, thanks to the city, we have now raised 3.6 million, almost 3.7 million, towards our $4.5 million goal. We will be launching the public phase of the campaign in September. We'll actually be announcing it during the Kyiv residency and inviting the community to give. We've got a couple really exciting matching grant challenges from some statewide foundations in Virginia. We were lucky enough to get those grants, and they're, they're challenges to the community where those foundations will double the donations that we receive. So we're hoping that will take us over the top and we'll reach our $4.5 million goal. And I have to say, when we meet with donors, we meet with business leaders and community leaders, a lot of people ask, is the city doing something? Because this has been a public-private partnership from the beginning, and we can say, yes, the city has contributed to this and has led once again in this, and I thank you so much for that. We are so grateful to the city for your partnership. We hosted the fire department for elevator training a few months ago. Major Bowie from the police department is coming tomorrow to train our volunteers on active shooting. We got a training from EMS on CPR, AED, first aid, last year. We love hosting events with parks and recreation, with tourism, with the library. We love partnering with the city, and I hope you'll continue to call us whenever you need any needs. We love partnering with the city. We hosted 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders for the Wednesday Art Academy last year, whenever the schools closed early for a half-day. All 11 of the elementary schools had buses coming with kids to the Suffolk Center for arts classes and dance classes, and we were just overjoyed to have those kids in the center. I am happy to take any questions that you have. I thank you very much for your time today and all of your support and partnership.
Great. Thank you, Lorelei. Council questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you very much for coming over and giving your presentation to us. I can tell you, I had a chance to tour that facility and look at the damage that has occurred over a number of years. This is a diamond in this city. This is not the diamond in the rough. This is the diamond. And we need to do everything we can to continue to promote and keep and preserve that building for the public, for our city and abroad, for people to use. You know, you're gaining some momentum here to bring the things that you've got coming in the next few months is phenomenal. And the things you all have done, even with the renovations going on, is pretty good. So you haven't missed a beat. Keep up the good work. You know, I'm always interested in what we can do as a city for the Cultural Arts Center. So reach out to me anytime.
Thank you.
I'm fully supportive of the Cultural Arts Center, and I want to thank you for your hard work because you surely have hit the ground running since you've been here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Lorelei, you all have just been terrific, and I thank you for all that you're doing. And when's the Plenair Show? What's the date on that?
Goodness. Friday, September 10th is the reception.
Right.
That starts at 6 o'clock, and then Taste of Suffolk is, I want to make sure I don't, didn't get that wrong.
Six to 11.
Six to 11. So the 11th is Sunday, the 10th is Taste of Suffolk. I just want to make sure I got that right for you.
It's okay. I didn't.
The Wet Paint Sale, September 9th, Friday evening.
Well, last year, we kept one of the, one of the artists.
Yes.
And she's coming back this year to be with us.
Great.
And she is very, very talented, and she is, she's a, she's a doctor by her trade, by her professional abilities, but she likes to do this. I think she got into this because of COVID. She needed a little break, you know, from the intense, intense medical stuff. And so she's coming back. She's a delightful lady, and I'm just excited, and I thank you for your leadership in making all this good things happen. And we'll be there for the ballet, too.
Great. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
And I'm gonna be brief, too, but thank you. I've heard so many stories about the busloads of kids coming out there and what an amazing time they had. So it's really good for all of us. And Plenair, we, you know, I'm so excited. It's, it's been a really great thing. And by the way, if people didn't know, they were my chickens in that picture.
Were they?
They were my chickens. They won first place.
Prize-winning chickens.
We thoroughly enjoyed it. If you have never been a part of it, guys, the artists are just phenomenal. They were all over the farm painting, and it was a wonderful time for everyone. And I think for the city, it's a tremendous thing. I only see it getting better and better and better. And the ballet, I've never been to a ballet. I'm excited.
I hope you come.
This is a great thing. But thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate it so much.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation and all that you're doing for the city and for the schools, really. And I know what you were saying about when the schools were closed, there's half a days, and all those kids had some place to go. And I think it's great that you chose to take them in and work with them and give them that time to have supervision and things to do. That's very positive, and I can't thank you enough. And I'm also glad to hear you say that you're making some of the seats a little bit larger.
Yeah.
I really did. I was waiting on that, so I really wanted to appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Lorelei, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
This really is a, truly a public-private partnership, and I appreciate all your efforts engaging the community, engaging our schools, involving them, and most appreciative of all the effort that both you and the board did to arrange the Kyiv Ballet to perform in our city. I mean, this is huge. From what I understand, this is their first venue in the United States?
Well, they'll start their tour in North Carolina.
I told Jim Hubble that, and he told me no. Okay, so they're starting in Carolina, then they're coming here, but maybe the only one in Virginia.
That's right.
But just to be the only one in Hampton Roads.
Yeah.
I mean, this is truly a feather in our cap, and once again, it's going to continue to show the rest of the world, you know, what we're doing in Suffolk and the opportunity to host these folks. I mean, I just don't enter the words. So thank you very much for all your efforts to make that happen, and everybody else who contributed to it, because I know, you know, we had to make arrangements with the Hilton Garden Inn and some other community partners, as well as the donors. So everybody put it together like we usually do in Suffolk to make it happen.
Yeah.
But once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next topic for discussion will be broadband initiatives. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we're making good progress out in the rural part of our city regarding the broadband infrastructure. Joining us today is Eric Collins with Charter Spectrum. He'll provide us with an update. He'll also be joined by Randa Guyton, who will touch base and provide an update and resources for our residents as we continue to make progress.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of council, it's good to be with you again. Looks like I'm a regular here, and look forward to being a regular to bring much-needed updates about broadband and our commitment to the city. about broadband and our commitment to the city, to get broadband deployed throughout the city. So in the way of an update, we actually have some good updates. And I really want to thank the city for July 14th, of those who were able to make it, for the groundbreaking ceremony, for hosting that ceremony for the other two localities that was involved. It was a great event. We, it was greatly attended by the public as well as other elected officials. So I really want to thank you for hosting that event. It turned out really well. At Charter, I can, I can tell you, I attend quite a few groundbreaking events. That one was pretty special. So thank you very much for that. And we have an update. Our third-party partner, which is Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, they're the managing partner of the VATI and a grant that we won. So what we did, we leveraged our ARDOF, as you know, we leveraged our ARDOF award with our VATI application in order to bolster our application and scoring of our application. And by doing so, we committed ourselves to building out the ARDOF along with the VATI together. So by doing that, we were successful in being granted a VATI award. And through that award, we were finally with HRPDC and Department of Housing and Community Development, we just finally signed the contract. That contract has an effective date of July 8th. And to be honest with you, we actually submitted a waiver to DHCD because we knew it was going to take time because of all the paperwork to get the contract completed. We submitted a waiver to actually begin the process of building, of, of walking out the system well before the contract. They honored that, that granted us that waiver that we could begin. So we're well underway. The terms of the contract was, is 36 months from the date of the contract was signed. So, so July 8th, from July 8th, 2022, we have 36 months to build the entire network. So let me put that in perspective. That is over 12,000 passings and that 36 months means that we have to build out all three, the City of Suffolk, Olive White, and Southampton County. It has to be completed within 36 months. Now granted, we, we, you know, there's circumstances that we can't control, but we planned, the plan is 36 months, barring, you know, any, any delays that might come before us. But we're on track. We had some initial delays early on, but we, we got through that. We're, it didn't put us behind. We're still on track to have this completed within 36 months. To do and want to say to the council that we did start within the city here. We started the project in the City of Suffolk. So we expect, we expect to be completed here, when we complete here. And the City of Suffolk will move over to Olive White County and then, of course, to Southampton. What that means is that you're gonna be, you, we should be completed with the City of Suffolk well before the 36 months. And that includes the ARDOF and the VATI award. So project construction has begun. It's well underway. This is a fiber-to-the-premise product that we're building. And that fiber-to-the-premise is, is future-proof for any future technologies that come down the line. So what we're building will bolster and host any additional services, products, or any changes in technology that will come into the future. So what we're building is something that is gonna be future-proof for our customers. Construction is underway. We're continuing to do permitting right away, which is needed for the project. And some really exciting news, it's actually moved a little quicker than what I thought. So when we, we did the ARDOF and we did the VATI, and when we're building, we did not concentrate just in the ARDOF areas because some of the VATI areas sort of were in the mingled in between the two. So within the next two to three weeks, we're gonna be releasing two nodes. And I think it's in Council Williams District, his borough. We're gonna be releasing some nodes that's gonna be released. Once we get that testing done, residents will be able to actually order service from us and get access to broadband. And those roads include Deer Forest Road, Adams Swamp Road, Cherry Grove Road, Greenway Road, Carolina Road, Gates Run Road, Desert Road, Clay Hill Road, and White Marsh Road. And within these are 175 of those addresses and those passings are in ARDOF. And 102 of them are in our VATI location. So we're really excited about that. So we're gonna be able to see consumers that's been in the rural areas, that have been lacking access to broadband. We're gonna be able to see some of those begin to get access to broadband. And with that, I'm gonna, I will turn it over to Ms. Randa. So, and she will provide some future updates that's coming.
Good evening. So the first update is, you know, obviously, as Suffolk, as Suffolk's broadband expansion project continues to progress, we wanted to let you guys know when you could expect the next update. So we're thinking in mid-winter, we'll have a really exciting and robust update to give you guys, so December, January timeframe. Additionally, there will be additional mapping released on the city's website once we start having these areas that are completed. So what Eric was just speaking about earlier will be updated on the, on the city's broadband website. And residents and yourselves can go to this website and go to this interactive mapping page and see where the progress is actually happening once certain section, or once sections are completed. It's also a really, really good resource for all of the other communications and informative sessions that we have planned. So if citizens have any questions or they're looking forward to any additional information that the city will be putting out as this project progresses, the website is gonna be the best place to go to get that information. And as you see right there in bold, it's suffolkva.us/broadband. And again, one of the best locations that you guys can go to get information besides calling me. And my number is actually listed on the website. So if anybody is interested in having a phone call, I'm happy to have a phone call with citizens and yourselves at any time. Any questions?
Council questions or comments? You guys getting off easy tonight. Don't say, well, we, we get a straggler.
To comment only because we are so excited. And it goes on and on and on. So everywhere, when they see your trucks pull in, everybody is so excited. I'm from the Holy Neck Borough and you guys are already out there and we appreciate it. And hopefully we'll have it all the way down 58 when we're finished as well, so. And I'm sure Mr. Williams is just as excited as I am over in Waylable. So it really is a great thing for our city. So thank you. And thank you for the updates. And Randa, thank you for always returning my call and taking care of any problems I have. We appreciate it.
Council, any other questions or comments? Once again, thank you to, to Councilman Johnson's point. I've also just had someone come to me, hey, they're burying cable in front of my house. So this is a continued good news for our city. And it's also the results of some joint effort. We've been able to leverage some resources to make it happen. So once again, that's what happens when we cooperate with each other. Thank you very much and I look forward to the updates.
One comment.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just want to thank the city, the staff from all the departments, from the permitting. They make it so much easier for this project, project as large as this. I just want to thank the city and all the departments for the hard work that they're doing, working with us to get this project done.
Thank you very much. Our next item will be emergency management update. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Per your recent request, we have an overview regarding our emergency management program. The overview will be provided by Deputy Chief Brian Spicer. The tail end of it will also feature a presentation by Public Works Director Robert Lewis, who will touch on our debris management program. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, it's good to see everyone this afternoon. As Mr. Hughes said, I'm gonna talk just briefly about our emergency management program, a real broad overview, and just touch briefly on some of the plans that we have in place. And that's gonna lead into Robert's discussion about our debris management plan. So we're gonna hit our hazards affecting Suffolk, our emergency operations plans, and then Robert will be up for his debris management discussion. So I think everyone knows that Suffolk is subject to a number of hazards that, both natural and made, that affect the city or can affect the city. Anything from nor'easters to severe thunderstorms, severe flooding from thunderstorms and nor'easters, tornadoes, we all remember the tornado of 2008, winter storms with heavy snowfall, extreme heat, which I think that we've, you guys have suffered over the last couple of weeks here. And of course, pandemic and influenza are just a couple of the natural hazards that affect us. Additionally, we have man-made hazards that we are subject to, such as aircraft, aircraft crashes from having an airport in our jurisdiction, as well as being in the flight path of Norfolk International, and I think to some extent Patrick Henry Airport. With eight dams in the City of Suffolk, we're subject to dam failure and the associated problems with that. By rail, by road, and through fixed facilities, we have a number of hazardous materials that are in or transiting through the City of Suffolk that could produce a hazard for us. We're subject to both rural and urban fire, being such a diverse city. And of course, with all the Department of Defense facilities that we have in and around the area, we are subject to terrorist incidents as well. To deal with all of these hazards, we have a number of plans in place, starting off with our basic plan, our emergency operations plan. And it's just really the basic playbook for all of the departments within the city to play by when addressing any of these hazards that might be affecting us. Basically, the goal of this and all of the plans that we talk about here is to return the citizens of Suffolk and the visitors of Suffolk back to a pre-disaster status. Within that emergency operations plan, you'll find support functions, emergency support functions. And these focus on detailing the specific responsibilities and tasks and operational actions to complete for specific emergency operational functions. As you can see, we've got 17 of them. We also have hazard-specific annexes. And if you'll notice with these, these parallel very closely with all of the hazards that are, affect the City of Suffolk as well, the top ones that we think may impact us. But this just gives us a more specific emergency operation plan to deal with any of these seven particular crises that could affect the city. We also have the Hampton Roads Regional Mitigation Plan. And Suffolk adopted this, I think our council adopted this just a couple of months ago. But Suffolk partnered with 21 other localities, towns, and cities throughout Hampton Roads to develop a regional mitigation plan to address things that we could do ahead of an incident to mitigate or to reduce the likelihood of those causing problems for the city. You know, anything from as simple as handing out of emergency management materials to the public, to the acquisition of repetitive loss properties and whatnot that are subject to flooding or whatever other loss they might be experiencing. We have an animal control, care and control plan that our police department has a point on. And this is basically any type of animal within the city that's affected by a disaster. It addresses that from livestock to pets, their health, their safety, their welfare, just everything affecting the animals. Our shelter operations plan, again, that's a more detailed plan specific to opening shelters for providing care and comfort to citizens or visitors of the City of Suffolk in the time of need when we are experiencing a disaster. And finally is our debris management plan. And I'm gonna ask Robert if he'd like to come up now. And I'll be standing by, happy to take any questions you might have once Mr. Lewis has completed his portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we're gonna talk just a few minutes about what happens when the unimaginable occurs, the storms and so forth. Many of us around here have been around long enough, we, we remember Hurricane Floyd, we remember Hurricane Andrew, we remember Hurricane Matthew, we remember the tornadoes of just a few years ago. We remember the tornado of Little Lee just two years ago, I believe it was. So disaster is, is just waiting to happen. And Jesus, just a few photos. You know, sometime, every disaster is different and unique. If you recall Hurricane Floyd, while we had some debris management issues, Floyd was more of a rain event and we had a lot of issues dealing with floods, which again, the chief in his plan has, has things to deal with that, but it also affected our infrastructure, it affected our roadways, our bridges, our culverts, lots of things. So then you contrast that just a few years later to Hurricane Isabel. Isabel came in, a little bit drier storm, but it was a lot more wind event. And a lot of these pictures are out of Isabel with the amount of debris that was generated after that. So again, you just see trees down everywhere. I just remember it just, it just looked like a bomb had fallen in here, trees were down everywhere. People's yards were destroyed, roads were blocked, they pulled utilities down, homes were destroyed or damaged. One of the things we see is then, immediately people start trying to clean up and the first thing they do is, is clean their yards, clean the streets, they stack stuff up on the side of the road. That's actually a good picture. That's, that's a manageable size pile. If you remember out of Isabel, some of these streets you could barely get down because it was so much debris out there to be picked up. Again, it's not only just the vegetated debris, a lot of times there's other things that we have to clean up. There's sometimes parts of automobiles, parts of buildings and different things. They get brought to the street, we're gonna try to take care of it and help our citizens out. But again, there's a lot of damage, a lot of recovery to occur in this. This was actually on East Washington Street, this was Hurricane Floyd, if I remember correctly. Again, the big tree came over, it fell on the house. They were actually pretty fortunate, it was a lot of, a lot of damage to the house. But look at what it did to the sidewalk. And actually, ultimately, as we started cleaning that up, there was some damage under the street that we had to deal with. And actually, we were in danger of rupturing an extremely old water line out there. So again, the cleanup sometimes can be as hazardous as the original event. And in fact, statistics tell us, most of the time, more people are injured after the storm and the cleanup than they are initially. So again, we try to be very helpful in getting this cleaned up. Again, just a few pictures, I believe this may have been after the recent tornado in Riverview. Again, you can just see the massive amounts of debris. You see the utility poles leaning, the power is out, the telephone is out, the cable is out. All of those infrastructure items that we take for granted. In this particular case, I think we probably had been in there with a front end load and literally just plowed the street and pushed things to the side to at least get it passable. So as I noted, every storm is a little bit unique. We've only done this one time. And I will note for you, kind of a, a point of, of interest, is Suffolk Public Works staff, we, unfortunately, we have experience in dealing with these types of storms. Granted, there a few years ago, but a lot of my senior staff, we, we operated, we worked during this, we spent many, many hours dealing with this, so we have experience. But one of the things we're generally required to do after we start cleaning this up, I mean, these are massive amounts of debris. And as a general rule, the landfill says, we can't take this vegetated debris. We can't fill our regional landfill up with this type of material. So that's when FEMA comes in and we look at different programs. One of the things we often do is we will set up these debris drop-off sites. So they're called reduction sites. So we've got all this massive amount of material that comes in, we bring it in, we have a contractor come in, working for us, and we reduce it down. We chip it, we break it up, we get it smaller. So again, something really large, a big tree fits in a dump truck, it's chips. And again, a lot of times those items will have a little bit of marketable value to get rid of. But additionally, a lot of citizens will say, hey, I can't afford, I don't want to wait for the city to get here, there's this place I can bring them to. This was over off the driver's site. And again, we set a site up that said, if you'd like to bring stuff in, bring your stuff in. It was right adjacent to our reduction site. And again, we allowed citizens to bring that in, we were steadily picking up. When I talk about pickup, if you recall back during Isabel, here's a, here's a contractor that came in. And there are actually men and women, companies that chase storms that do this for a living. But they would come in with their equipment, they would often have half sides on, this happened to be a dump truck, you saw anything from a dump truck to a pickup truck, to a utility trailer with plywood sides. They would bring bobcats in, sometimes they'd load it by hand, but they would load this debris up and they'd bring it to our site. We would weigh it, measure it, and they would get recorded and we actually pay them to help us clean the street. There was absolutely no way our governmental staff could ever begin to clean this amount of debris up in a, in a reasonable time. That's why we count on these types of companies to come in and to assist us. One of the things we have since done, since Hurricane Isabel and working through the Department of Environmental Quality and some other regulatory agencies, we have pre-identified four sites within the city that could be used as debris reduction sites should a large event occur again. Just very roughly, one is up at Driver, one is at our Carolina Road Public Works Operations Center, there's one down in Waylville, and there's one towards the Holland direction. Again, predetermined, we've got approvals from Army Corps of Engineers and some of those other pieces that in very short order, we can open those sites up and start taking debris and start breaking it down if an event occurs. What we learned- What we learned during Isabel, that's actually one of the most cumbersome processes and takes the longest sometimes to get all the approvals to get these places set up and going. That's the storm event. Let's talk just a little bit about, maybe it's not quite a hurricane, maybe it's not even quite a tornado, it's just a normal thunderstorm that comes through, and it generates a bunch of tree damage, or it's springtime and everybody wants to clean their yards up. They all have debris, and what do they do? This is actually, and I dropped a copy of this off at each of your seat this afternoon, this is our newest and latest brochure that talks about the way we do refuge and recycling in our city, and it talks about in there how we pick this stuff up and manage it. So again, many piles, and I'll get to what's a legal pile in a minute, you put it on the street, we pick it up, we haul it away from you. There's also opportunities in there for certain amounts of debris that you can contract with the city, we'll bring a roll-off dump stack that you can fill up at your leisure, then we pick it up and dispose of it. But again, as you get calls from citizens that are asking, I hope this is helpful to you, this is available on our website. Again, hopefully, this answers most of the questions they may have. The biggest question and the one we get most often is, how big a pile can I put out? So it's 12 cubic yards, which is actually a pile six foot by six foot by nine foot, or two yards by two yards by three yards. Do we go out there and put a tape measure on and measure everyone? No. Close, we're going to pick it up. If it's three times bigger than 12 cubic yards, we're going to say, hey, that's an illegal pile, we can't handle it. But again, citizens, this is what we provide in return for their tax dollars that we pay, their fees in return for sanitation, and again, it's a great service we provide to citizens. So again, just for any, everybody, again, if anybody has any questions, that's the latest information, and again, we're able to answer any questions. And with that, I believe Chief Spicer and I are available for any questions you may have as follow-up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Counsel, questions or comments from, questions from Chief Spicer or Mr. Lewis? Hearing none, looks like you guys are getting off easy, and I want to thank you for everything that your department does. I know lots of times our citizens take it for granted that their trash is getting picked up and the debris is going away, but it's not some miracle, and normally, when these events come around, that means that your folks are working overtime, extra time, Sundays, holidays, they don't wait to come back to work. So I appreciate everything that you're doing. I know we changed what was allowed to be picked up with bulk pickup a couple of years ago to make it larger, it's six by six by nine now, and you get, one a month, is it?
One per month, 12 per year.
Okay, one a month, 12 a year without any charge, and I know you guys do a great job, just put it out there, normally within 24, 48 hours, somebody's got it picked up. And I appreciate the management plan that we have, because we've got to be prepared when the time comes, and if it's anything like we've done in the past, I don't, I think we're in pretty good hands. So thank you once again.
Mayor Doobin, if I might add also, there has been some information that Public Works has put out in the last few weeks. We are still struggling in some days with our refuge collection, our pickup. I, I tell citizens all the time, the one thing that Public Works will accomplish every day is we will get their garbage off the street. We may not cut grass, we may not patch potholes, but we will get their trash up every day off the street. There were a few days week before last that we literally had so many people out because of health issues that we were, again, pulling people out of our roadway maintenance. We actually pulled two people out of Risk Management and Human Resources who had CDLs that they assisted us, we appreciate that. Again, some people called and said, hey, my trash hadn't been picked up, and we just said, hang on, we're coming. Might not be there on normal schedule, but we are coming. And again, I just want to commit to counsel, that is our number one priority, we will pick up trash every day for our citizens. We may not get this, the bulk pickup, we may not get that old chair, but we will get the garbage off the street that's a health concern.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate you addressing that, because I also had a comment about that. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you one question, and maybe a comment too, is that I'm getting quite a few calls about the recycling cans and not picking up and stuff like that. When they call, TFC, they'll tell them to call the city.
They do, sir.
I think we need to get that straight.
And unfortunately, that's the way the contract is written. TFC works for us, not for the citizens. So generally, what we tell the citizens is, call us, we'll take the information, we'll call TFC and tell them where they missed, what they need to do. TFC has struggled even greater than we have, which is interesting for a private business. There have been many days, they have been one, two, and three days late in having enough equipment and manpower out there to get it. To the best of my knowledge, they have not yet met one of our rights and done it. They may not have done it on the day they were supposed to, but they've generally been trying to keep up. But yes, if anybody's got a concern with recycling, if they will call the Refuge Collection staff, we do act as a go-between to reach out to the company and pass those concerns along. That's anything from my, my recycling didn't get dumped, to I've got a broken can, I need a new lid, what, I need a can, whatever those case may be, we will act as a conduit for that.
I'm glad to hear that, because I was getting two different stories. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes our work session at this time. I understand we have a need for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, 88 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for the appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, the Tidewater Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Water Authority.
Counsel, a motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, can I, do I hear a second? Councilman Johnson?
That'd be fine.
We got a second from Councilman Johnson, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This work session stands adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.